Chief Randy Jackson. Chief William Jackson is chief of the Mobile Police Department. Whereas he served in numerous roles for more than 28 years. Jackson grew up in Chappaqua and attended Viger High School. Chief Jackson has been around law enforcement his entire life. With his dad retiring from the Mobile Police Department with many years of dedicated service. Chief Jackson. Dr. Ashley Williams is a trauma acute care and burn surgeon at the University of South Alabama and serves as the Director of the USA Health Center for Healthy Communities. Her work focuses on firearm injury prevention, health equity, and advocacy. She is the founder and director of Project Inspire, a hospital-led violence prevention initiative offering education, exposure, and mentorship to justice-affiliated youth to help prevent victimization and reduce gun violence. Dr. Williams also serves as Medical Director of the USA Health Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program, both of which are interparts of a broader collaborative strategy to prevent firearm-related injuries through trauma-informed community safety. Dr. Williams. Dr. Kevin Michaels is the Health Officer for County and serves as the Area Health Officer for the Public Health District of Mobile County for the Alabama Department of Public Safety. Dr. Michaels is responsible for safeguarding the public's health and the environment for all of Mobile County. He is an active member of more than 10 community organizations across our area using his voice to address any issue the city may face. Dr. Kevin Michaels. Andy Gatewood. With over 30 years of experience in public safety and youth-focused prevention, Andy Gatewood serves as the Director of Safety and Security for Mobile County Public Schools. He began his career in 1991 with the Mobile Police Department, serving as a patrolman before transitioning to the school system as a resource officer in 1995. He held that position for more than two decades before stepping into his current leadership role in 2017. Alongside his work in school safety, Mr. Gatewood has also played a key role in substance abuse prevention through the Drug Education Council, serving as a chemical abuse prevention program facilitator since 1995 and program coordinator since 2017. He holds a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice Administration from the University of South Alabama and a master's degree in Public Administration from Troy University. There are some additional attendees that are not on stage. Curtis Graves, Melvin Jones, and Dr. Cindy Gibson. If needed, they will interject to keep our discussion lively and meaningful. Let's get started. As President of the City Council, what is your role in the prevention of youth gun violence?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone and thank you so much for the committee for inviting me out this evening. Also, I would like to recognize other council members that is present. We have a Vice President, Gina Gregory, District 7; District 1, Cora Penn; and we also have District 2 Councilman, Councilman William Carroll, that is also present. Would me be on the council for, I'm going to say approximately 12 years, it's nothing that the Mobile City Council has never denied, no type of funding whatsoever towards the Police Department for funding for the youth. The youth is very important to the Mobile City Council. Without the youth, we won't have another tomorrow. One of the hurtful things that the Mobile Chamber has said to us about a year and a half ago that we have more jobs than citizens. So right now, we need to make sure that we keep our youth around and make sure that they are ready for tomorrow to fill these jobs that are available today. So anything that the City Council of Mobile can do, especially that we also lean and depend on the experts like the Chief of Police and also the Director of Public Safety. And anything that they need, we are more than willing to be right there to help find those initiatives to make sure that our youth have a better today and tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Lasky, please explain your approach to public safety and how is it applicable to youth gun violence?
Well, good morning. Thank you very much. I want to start off by saying, when I took this job, I looked at it and wanted to take a holistic view of public safety and our approach to the gun violence. We wanted to stop reacting to incidents and start looking at the root causes. I'm happy to say that we now have more programs with respect to prevention and mitigation than at any other time in the city of Mobile's history. I want to take a couple minutes and kind of introduce you and let you know something about those programs. You've already met Curtis Graves. Curtis Graves, my Deputy Director, he's my right and the left hand. I met Curtis Graves on this journey to public safety about 10, 11 years ago when we first developed Bridging the Gap with the Mobile County Public Schools. I went on to different things, but Curtis kept that journey going and he's truly a remarkable person who's given much of his life to prevention mitigation. There's also Sergeant McCarty's. Sergeant, can you stand up and wave to everybody? He's my sergeant. He basically runs the show. He makes sure everything happens at that time. And Corporal Griffin, where is she? Is anybody that's Corporal Griffin? She helps out as well. She is a tremendous director. All of our PSAs are directed and written by Ms. Griffin. We also have the Family Intervention Team. Can y'all stand up and wave to everybody? So that's Mr. Thomas, Ms. King, Ms. Wright, and Ms. Clifton. They work with the school system. We'll talk a little bit about them later, but they're an integral part of what we do. We also have our victim services. Stacey Woodward and Tanelle Thomas, can you guys wave your hands, say hi for that? And I would be remiss because one of our alumni from our services sitting in the audience who has left us to join Dr. Williams in the Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program, so Ms. Baptiste, can you wave to everybody as well? Again, another person who's not giving up on the cause. We also have our, I don't get the one that... We also get our community facilitators, Azmarad, Bonnie Davis, and Nigel Hill. They go out to the community and they talk to people on the street about violence or victims of violence and try to de-escalate. They spend a lot of time at our schools talking about de-escalation and conflict resolution. We also have our mental health co-responsers because mental health is a big issue when we come to this. We have Officer Gump, who's our Officer of Mental Health and Crime State, and Dr. Cindy Gibson from All Point, who spends a lot of work dealing with what we do and helps with the violence. Then we have our homeless outreach team. And most people want to think about homelessness in the brief of the side of the road. I don't want to blow my ceiling, anybody's thunder, but we have about 3,000 students whose parents are homeless and are countercypher. And although a lot of times they don't qualify for federal assistance or anything, but that's one of our problems that we have here. Also, within, we have the group that put on this event tonight, our Community Advisory Group, so if you all leave, wave or save your hand if you're part of that group. And I also wanted to say, recognize another young man who does a lot for the city and a lot for the youth, and that's Feline Carter. Feline works for Parks and Recs and the Sean Spencer, which he's also a group. So when I say we take a holistic view, we really do, we want to focus, like I said, on the root causes. We spent a lot of time in the Mobile County Public Schools and working with them. We have Bridging the Gap Family Intervention Team. We recently hired a school safety analyst. Our community facilitators spent a lot of time with our young kids. And we try to identify and hit conflict resolution and try to educate them on the different ideas and how to understand what, when they come and contact the law enforcement, what should they expect, what are they going to do. Mental health and trauma support is another thing we look at. I'll let Dr. Williams talk about her program, Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program. It's a tremendous program. We're the second city in Alabama to have it. But it's also, we need to normalize access in the understanding of mental health. We have people that understand that there are issues. We have programs with our co-respons, our super veteran platform that we'll talk about at some point tonight. And it's really important that we let these young people know that if they are having mental issues, that it's not a stigma or anything, but it's normal. We really need to address them. Another thing that we really focus on is civic empowerment and youth-led solutions. Civic empowerment is what we're here today. We want to hear from you. Tell us where we're missing the spot. Tell us what we're not doing. I tell the story that Bridging the Gap was created after we had a shooting in Mobile and myself and James Barber, we were in it, talking to a group at a church. And a grandmother stood up and said, "It's great that you're talking to us, but you need to be talking to our youth. You need to be understanding what they're going through." And that's how the whole Bridging the Gap platform came about. And the last thing that we're still working on is addressing economic and social inequities. We recently partnered with the RAIN group and we're trying desperately to get an Economic Resource Center opened up in the city so we can start training and helping develop our youth have better jobs and a brighter future. Again, it's a lot of information, but again, we want to take a holistic view and really attack the root causes. Thank you.
This is public safety, so the public safety aspect needs to come forward. But if I was sitting with you, I would want something to be redirected so that when the next question is asked to Dr. Williams, she'll be able to place those comments directly into the synopsis that's just been given. So Dr. Williams, the question that I have for you is what are you seeing in terms of youth being impacted by gun violence in Mobile?
Good evening, everyone. I am really honored to be here and to be a part of this panel and to be a part of this discussion because we can talk a lot, but certainly we want to also hear from you all, so I'm excited about that portion. But as he mentioned, I'm a trauma surgeon. I work at USA Health and we have someone trained and ready to help injured patients all throughout the city, but really all throughout the Gulf Coast region. And when we think about gun violence, that is a significant portion of the patients that we see. Typically, a trauma center will see 10% penetrating trauma, and that's a large volume. Penetrating trauma meaning predominantly gunshot wounds. For us, we are at 20% to 22%, so really double that of other large trauma centers across the country. We recently looked at our numbers on youth who are coming into our trauma center. We looked at ages 24 and younger, so just being born all the way to 24. And from 2018 to about midway through 2023, not even the whole 2023, we treated 642 youth and young adults, which is a significant number. 111 of those didn't survive. And that's just what we see. That's not the youth that don't make it to the hospital or go to other centers to be treated. And you know, numbers are, of course, they paint the picture, but a lot of the work that we want to do and put forth is how do we prevent the one? And so if you've heard me talk about this, I truly believe that violence can be treated just like any other disease process. Hypertension and diabetes, they are root causes that Director Lasky mentioned. There are identifiable risk factors, things that put us at greater risk for experiencing violence, just like any other disease process. So how do we get outside of the hospital walls? How do we get into the community and solve these issues? There's a concept called the social determinants of health. And what that means is there are things, particularly where we live, where we work, where we play, our environment, that really influences our health outcomes. And those things influence are, again, risk for hypertension, for diabetes, but also for experiencing violence, either as a perpetrator of violence or a victim of violence. And we know that many who engage in perpetration of violence have once been victims. So there is this cycle of violence that we know exists, and there is a normalization of violence that exists. As he mentioned, I work with youth who are justice affiliated. So they're referred to us by Strickland, Judge Naaman, Chief Baptiste. They have been super supportive of this program from its inception, but the whole idea is to reach youth when we know that they, that there are identifiable risk factors such as truancy, such as having a nonviolent gun offense, being illegally in possession of a firearm. We know that that's a chance for us to intervene, to prevent those youth from coming to me as a patient, but also going back into the justice system. So a lot of our work is based on that prevention. We know that the best cure or best treatment for any disease process is certainly prevention. How do we stop it from happening? And so that's why these conversations are so important, so that we can, one, identify issues that we're having in our community and, two, be able to come up with impactful ways, impactful solutions to solve those problems. And I'm looking forward to talking more about the different programs as we go along.
Dr. Michaels, from a public health perspective, what are some of our current strategies to address gun violence and what additional things should we be doing?
Good evening and thank you for having me here. I just want to, you know, our mission at the Health Department is to promote, protect, enhance the health and well-being of all people in our community. The big picture of public health is that we work at the community level while doctors and nurses care for the individual patients or individuals that find themselves there. So we have a number of community-based interventions that we're working on and they're trying, you know, and we're attempting to address multiple social determinants of health, you know, and we recognize, you know, as Dr. Ashley Williams mentioned, you know, we have issues of poverty, we have issues of lack of education, you know, lack of mentorship in our community. And so a lot of our programs try to address those areas or, you know, supplement opportunities there. And so we have, you know, we work hand-in-hand with violence prevention programs. We're supporting at-risk families at home. You know, on the mental health services, we're advocating for early intervention and counseling as well as substance abuse treatment in the community because substance abuse is another, you know, another item on the table. And then we have that health education outreach program. So one of the programs we started and worked with USA and Dr. Ashley Williams, she picked up to take charge is educating the outreach workers in the community. And we've trained 63 people over the last couple of years, the outreach workers. They're in key positions in our community, faith-based organizations, as well as working some of the legal activities in the community. And then, you know, one of the big things that will probably be addressed is the fatherhood program. So those people that find themselves coming out of the judicial system, being released, we're mentoring them on what a good parent looks like or should be. So we're addressing all those different programs. We're limited by funding, but we're doing the best we can and what we have.
Mr. Gatewood. What continuing strategies? What strategies are schools currently using to prevent violent behavior among students? And how do you address early warning signs of gun-related activity?
Good evening. I'd just like to say thank you for having me tonight. I feel very humbled to be amongst such a distinguished panel. And I also like to say thanks to whoever dressed up my bio like they did. It sounded a lot better than when I sent it in. It's all true, but it sounded a lot better in that format anyway. I appreciate that. I think Curtis is shaking his head. I know he has something to do with it. As a school system, as the Director of Security for Mobile County Public Schools, there, we have, you know, there's a couple of obligations. First of all is that we, my department, I currently have 13 resource officers, one operations manager, one cyber safety coordinator, and some patrol officers and guards that work for us. And so our job is to make sure that our students and our staff have an environment that is safe and conducive to teaching and learning. We're in the education business, you know, I have to, all of the resource officers that currently work for me, that work for my department, are former law enforcement officers, but we have to remember that, again, we're in the business of educating children, so we have to do whatever it takes. Now, there are certain physical things that we do. We have some things in place where we're, you know, we're vetting the students and the visitors in the mornings to make sure that they don't have anything they're not supposed to have and have the things that they are supposed to have. We're monitoring, we're doing a much better job now of monitoring computer traffic and seeing what they're, because, you know, social media has changed everything, quite frankly, and the technology is a wonderful thing, but it can be a wonderful thing or it can be a very bad thing. We put in place a cell phone management program now where students are not to have their cell phones throughout the day. Now, do they? Some of them sneak around, certainly, but we're also doing some things to try to fix that part. So when we discovered that, one of the things that we're doing is a behavioral threat assessment process. We, it's called C-STAG, Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. It's an evidence-based program that we put into place. My new cyber safety coordinator is one of the lead folks that are doing these behavioral threat assessments. We do them quite frequently. If there's any sign that a student has displayed any irrational behavior, any threatening behavior, or whether it's self-harm or harm to others, we conduct one of these threat assessments. We're also, I know that Director Lasky talked about Dr. Gibson. Dr. Gibson, we're also a part of a community threat assessment group that meets once a month with FBI, folks from all over the community so that we can talk about things, not only in our school system, but in our community. What we have to remember is, and what we fight every day is, we want to fix all of them and we do our best, but we have to, again, at the most, we have the students 40 hours a week, basically a work week, eight hours a day, right? If my calculations are correct, there's 128 hours, other hours in the day, whether, you know, including weekends where they're with somebody else. So we, as much as I would love to take responsibility and do something for those 128 hours that are not with us, it's a very difficult task. So what we found is we reached out to the FIT team, another thing that Mr. Lasky is, and he's talking about the Sealing Thunder, he's already talked about everything I want to talk about, but, which is good because that means we're working in coordination with the Mobile Police Department. Curtis and I have been friends for 30 years. He hates me to say this, but I was Curtis' field training officer on the police department and I tell everybody that because I'm proud of that because of the person he has become. Curtis and, and Curtis actually was a resource officer in the school system for 13 years, 12 years. So we've been friends a long time and we have the same heart, I feel like. Our heart is, has a lot to do with the kids in this county, in this system, in this county, in this city. Curtis has opened up a lot of doors for us. What I realized when I took over this responsibility, this job in 2017, is we've tried to, you know, we've tried to arrest our way out of some problems. Well, it's quite obvious right now that that's just not going to work. We have to, there's occasions when we have to do that, we have to, you know, somebody's committing crimes just like police officers have to deal with those things. However, we have to work with the FIT team and work with projects. We've just hired a student, Safety Layson, who is actually in the audience tonight, who we will work closely with and we will, that person will gather data for us in certain areas where we determine based on data, based on discipline data, that we need to focus our efforts the most. And we will do that. We're in the process of creating some programs as we speak. Again, I keep talking about my cyber safety coordinator is in the process. We're going to go into schools. We're going to catch when they're young. We're going to go late, elementary school and start doing some programs. We're going to give them handouts and things. You know, I remember when I was a kid, the Junior Deputy Program. I don't know if you guys, I'm telling my age now, anybody went through that program? That stuck with me. I remember that. So we want to get to them and have them realize that there's more to life, that your future is ahead of you than what's happening in, you know, in some of these other places. So anyway, I can, I promise I could talk about the things that we're doing for an hour. Y'all don't want me to do that, I'm sure. So, but that's just a few of the things that we're doing. I want to thank, I must say, and he's sitting right next to me, but Chief Jackson has been nothing but helpful. We have a particular football game that we have, it's as big as some college football games. One phone call to Chief Jackson, he had every resource that I needed in that parking lot, in that stadium, in those stands, helping me that evening, so I appreciate that. Director Lasky, of course, heard all the things that they've done for us, but that's what it takes. Again, we've got 40 hours a week, somebody else has 128 hours a week, so we've got to work together to make sure that we get, we actually all meet this goal. So thank you.
Heard from the council, its support, public safety, its perspective, its goals, the reality of gun violence, how it affects our community. Heard about public health, how are we looking to make a difference in that particular area we've addressed? Our schools, our youth. Now that talks about. One thing that'll come next. Chief Jackson. How does the Mobile Police Department currently work, not just with schools, but with parents and with the community and community organizations to help prevent young people from engaging in violent behavior?
First off, also thank you for allowing me to be here. As a Director and as Andy spoke about, we have the Bridging the Gap program. Just to enlighten you a little bit about what that program is, we work this program with all Mobile County Public Schools, high schools. It's a half a day worth of getting to know one another. It helps us understand each other. We have sworn MPD officers that facilitate role-playing of traffic stops, street stops, domestic encounters so that we can all understand each other. So the public, as they grow up, they understand why we do what we do, why we ask what we ask, and why we're all trying to go home safely. But it helps us to foster mutual understanding and encourages respect and cooperation from both sides, provides guidance and positive role models. It doesn't end there. There's a need that can still reach back out to us. And it helps to reduce involvement in crimes because they leave there with a better understanding. And it's funny, when you first get there and the kids get off the bus and they come in, most of them have their arms folded, they're not sure what they're getting into. And usually Sergeant McCarty, I'm usually the first one he introduces, and all I do is ask them to please, come with an open mind, come with an idea of taking a new perspective. And throughout the day, you will see the change in their attitudes and the reception of what they're seeing. It really makes a big difference. Now, do all of the students end up taking away the same? No, they don't. The majority leave with a better understanding. Something else that we do with the schools is, we have, in our Gulf Coast Technology Center, we have what's called a threat assessment desk. If there's a threat on social media that we come across, or that the school board comes across, they immediately kick to the threat assessment desk, and it's immediately investigated, sent to patrol, sent to a detective, to get out of that school, to prevent whatever that threat may be that was posted online, so that it doesn't occur. And sometimes that does result in, as Andy referred to, sometimes we do have to make a risk. Because that's just part of it. You can't threaten to kill someone or to throw a school, blow a school off, and not have repercussions. The threat assessment desk has been tremendous over the past year and a half, two years, under the leadership of Andre King, who is now with the school system, but still holds a place with the GCTC, to be able to allow this threat assessment desk to continue. As far as parents, you know, we just need to know what you need from us. If you're seeing something, if you're having a problem, please reach out to us. You see all the resources we have on the wall over here that's been introduced? If you're seeing signs of your child maybe possibly going down the wrong path, reach out to us. Director Graves has so many contacts in so many areas that we can find help.
I've been scanning the audience, as we have spoken to them. So glad that my vision is better now, where I can see your faces and your responses. And moderating is a very serious job, and I have to do this, because I'm listening. And as I came in, someone told me, make sure it's not the normal BS. I said, well, no, that won't happen. Someone else, they're involved in the fight from this perspective. Culture, wow, elephant in the room. The culture of gun violence. Hero worship with a gun. Nice movies fed to the children with a gun. Video games taking away its sensitivity of life. Chief Lasky. With that thought in mind, how do you see the role of public safety evolving in terms of coordinating those resources between law enforcement, public health, and community organizations to reduce within our culture gun violence?
First of all, we all have to have a shared understanding that violence and gun violence is a public health issue. It's not a law enforcement issue, it's not a medical issue, it's not a school issue. It's a public health issue, and we really need to address it that way. That's why you see all of us up here, that know each other, work together, and partner with each other to address this on all levels. Some of the bigger things that we can do as a group, real-time collaboration and information sharing, whether it's between the GCTC, public schools, whether it's between the hospital-based violence intervention program, and the PD or the Health Department. We have, we've established those bonds, both with the FIT team, the School St. Pianol, and that's just been ironed. And we really need to do that collaboration and understanding, not only to see where violence came from, but to reduce or stop the circle of violence. And that's, and I'll let Dr. Williams talk more about that, which he talked about in the program. A co-response to crisis, not just violence, but to mental health, to incidents that happen. We get over 2,000 calls a year dealing with mental health crises. We need to respond as a unit totally. It just can't be the police going out there sweeping somebody off, either taking them to jail, protecting these point. It needs a co-response, we really need to understand, go back to the root, determine what the root cause of that is. We need to invest in healing and restoration. We need to come up with grassroots program. People like Nyjah Hiller, her Mothers Against Gun Violence, are community facilitators who are out there, working with our kids on de-escalation, conflict resolution. It's one of these things that we have to be preventative and not punitive. We really need to get that culture, and it takes, like I said, it takes a family, or it takes a village. Well, this is our village that we're trying to address that culture with. And the fact that we are working together at all aspects is how, is what we need to do to help mitigate this issue.
Mr. Smalls, Dr. Williams, you all can engage this. I'm not asking you from your position on the council. As you address that, and as one of our leading funeral directors, when you see the results of those who transitioned, as you see the same youth that should have a long life, that you address those that may be friends, and they're playing with guns, and the gun goes off, because of the culture, and because we're not reaching Councilman Smalls, let's hear an exchange of how your heart is ripped out, and your heart is ripped out. And their hearts are ripped out, because these are their children, and their friends, and their loved ones. So we can get right into a collaboration between our community and government that fights together to eradicate so much gun violence. Mr. Smalls?
Yeah, I entered the funerary industry at a very young age. I think I was probably around the age of 21, when I became a licensed funeral director in a balm. One of the first cases when I got licensed was seeing one of my middle school classmates from Booker T. Washington laying in front of me, dead, just for going into some housing projects, and he was going to try to get his best friend from upstairs. And the guys looked at him and said, what you doing here? And they just shot him completely dead. And just looking at him, saying that that was my classmate, probably around about the age of 21, was one of the most hurtful things to me. Being a young funeral director in a balm, and seeing the cases that came before me, many times I could have said, that could have been me. This could have been me just laying on this table. And, you know, it's very, very hurtful to see things like that. It's very hurtful even seeing things like that, because the young people have not even started their lives. You know, fortunately, I was young and started, you know, my career early. But many people are still in college at the age of 21 and 22 years old. But just seeing how sensitive that is, and pretty much just seeing a grieving mother crying, not only because, you know, her son or, you know, is gone, but just because she got to come up with money to pay for a decent funeral and everything. It's very hurtful. Even being a victim of gun violence, you know, back in 2016. I mean, basically just minding my own business, just working, you know, and someone just senselessly just come up and just shot me right in the face. So it's very hurtful just seeing, not only just young people just losing their lives, but just seeing the families, how they had to go beyond for many, many years. A mother that she gave birth to her child, now she got to put her child in the ground thinking that her child is going to bury her, but she's burying her child that she had birthed into the world. It's very hurtful toward many funeral directors, just as well I know that you know, Ron Ali.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. That, I feel like I say this a lot, but genuinely, it's the hardest part of my job. Talking, talking to family members and telling them, you know, despite doing everything that I had at my disposal, and at our disposal, our team's disposal, I wasn't able to save a child. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't get easier. In the stories, a child getting groceries out of the car, or shot inside of their apartment from a bullet coming from the outside. Or playing cops and robbers, and one of the kids playing, got a hold of a loaded gun. Or picking up a gun in the backseat of a car while parents went inside of a store. It's, the stories just continue. So in a lot of ways, you know, I'm proud of the collaborations that we have. I'm proud to, you know, have moments like this, where we're discussing, you know, what we can do. But oftentimes, it feels like we're chipping away at a mountain, and these stories continue. And in a lot of ways, it feels like we're at the stage now where we are trying to stop the bleed, right? We're trying to, as many, as many have said up here, we're trying to confront a public health crisis, an issue that is, that is large, that is one out of control, right? And so now, in addition to all the efforts that we, you know, have, all the collaborations and everything that we're doing, we got to keep moving the needle earlier and earlier, in my opinion. As I mentioned, we are stopping the bleed. So a lot of our programs are for families who are already at crisis, for youth who are already affiliated with the justice system, for families who are already burying, you know, a loved one. And we talk a lot about, you know, the deaths, but there are a lot of people who survive and have lasting impacts, whether it be physical, whether it be mental, psychosocial, economic, spiritual. There are so many impacts down the line. And even beyond that individual, as many of us in this room may have a good understanding and be directly impacted as families, and then as a community, right? And so the impacts of gunshots, whether that person is victimized and dies, or whether they're victimized and survives, go so deep and they stretch so wide. And so in the ideal world, we will get to a point where, when your kid has allergies, we know where to take them. If your child is struggling with childhood obesity or asthma, we know where to take them. But where do we take our children when our, when they've experienced domestic violence in the home, right? When they've experienced a loved one dying? Where do we, where do we take our kids? And so in an ideal world, we would have systems set up to where a child goes into kindergarten, they go to first grade, second grade. And when we notice these risk factors, when we can say, that child has started to not come to school, or they're falling asleep in class, or I can tell that they're not, they're not getting fed at home. What if, when we realize that a child has all of these risk factors that we're screening for, we're actively looking for, that early, we can provide these services? Moving from stopping the bleeding to more of a preventive care. And so I think we've done a tremendous amount of work putting together the programs that we have, and I'm very proud of them. But as many of us in the room may feel, this is a very complex issue, and it's going to take time. And so, you know, I just want to, in this moment, encourage us. You know, we're talking about a very difficult topic, something that I face, you know, far too often, meeting my patients in the trauma bay. But I want to encourage us that it's a process, and it takes time. And as we stay in this fight, as we stay in this battle to really address this public health crisis, there's a lot that we can do. There are a lot of lives that have already been saved, and more that we can save. Taking this public health approach is so important, and we've done it in the past for things like motor vehicle safety. So prior to 2018, 2019, it was more likely that you and I, if died by a traumatic way, would be by a car accident. But 2018, 2019, that flipped, and car accidents, deaths from car accidents are going down, and deaths from gun violence is going up. So the way that we approached motor vehicle safety from a public health standpoint is the same thing that we could do for gun violence, but it takes time.
Dr. Michaels, I'm listening. My question was going to be, to ask you where they come from, Dr. Williams. She talked to you already, she told you. How do you address that? Where do we go from here?
Well, it hasn't been officially, officially released yet. But we've been working with the state on a program to provide evidence-based mental health services or emotional support to the community on the phone. Every state, every member of the state will have access to a program that will help them, it's evidence-based, will help them address the stress or the emotional wellbeing they're going through. The loss, coping with gun violence, you know, in the community, and a number of other topics. So that's coming out in the next couple, we're going through, you know, we're going through getting the program out there. So that's coming out. It's been being worked on the last six months. The other thing that, you know, just kind of from a data standpoint, since 2018, violence has increased, gun violence has increased, self-harm has increased in the community. We have data to show that. Other things that we have done in the community, we have placed out self-harm kiosks in the community, and there are five out there. And so a community member could go to the, could go to the kiosk and put in some basic information, basically, what zip code you're from, not asking for any specific detail, and they can get an Arcan rescue kit to address the opioid epidemic in the community. As well as, we've had a number of organizations donate gun locks. So getting a gun lock free could, you know, can be used at home to make sure that that young child doesn't get access or, you know, accidentally fire the weapon at home. So those are programs we're making services available out to the community.
When we look at what's been given to us, going down and coming back, I'm sure that the questions that will come from you will also address our schools and the police department. So we're going to ask you to come to the center, tell us who your question is for, and then your question, remembering the grounds. Please come. First, who your question is for.
First of all, anybody can ask me a question. So it's a general question, asking a solution, I believe, to our problem. I have a problem at Booker Washington Middle School, where I provide, I provide close to 60 band instruments to the students. And I would like to see it replicated throughout the city. And if I could make it to May of this year, I would cross one child to gun violence, what I ask each of you, go to the pawn shop, purchase a band instrument or something, take it to the school, put it on the desk, and give that child a chance. I'd much better see it with a band instrument than an instrument of death. So I would love to, for any one of you to address my issue, how can we provide solutions, we know the problems, to our kids in the school? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a statement based on what he said. And that's one of the things that I agree with most, is we...
that I agree with most, is we really need to look for ways to get structured environment for our children so that they're, they have less downtime to do things that they maybe should not do. So, I'm one hundred percent agree, if there's anything that we can do as a police department to help assist in finding that structured environment to allow them to do productive things, we're here for you.
I would ask if you can go over to the family intervention team table, give your name and contact information, we'll see if there's a way we can help you get some more instruments.
This is your time.
Sabrina Mas, so, we, we hear you talking about issues. We, we, I think, I can't speak for everybody, but a lot of us came from the ghetto, hood, whatever you wanna call it. So, we know what it is to be involved in gun violence, most of us, as myself, stay in districts that have gun violence. And it's not because we're not educated or we're not smart, but we keep hearing, talking about things on the panel and talking about this and that. So, we want to know, what is the solution? And why, if you're gonna be putting, and you haven't talked about money or resources to go back into our black districts, it's gonna take money. It's like the broken window syndrome. If a window breaks and you don't go repair that window, another one would break, and then another one would break, and then guess what, then the whole building would come crashing down eventually. So, I, my question is, what, why don't you put money into the black communities? We know where the gun violence is coming from mostly. And then, not only that, you have black people in this community that have boots on the ground all the time trying to fight gun violence with their programs, put money in their programs, put money into it, it's gonna take money and resources, not just talking.
Might we respond?
I mean, I, I'd like to say that, like, we have our city council people and CJ up here, they give every, every week, if you look down, it says, this organization, that organization, this program, that serves a public purpose, and they get, and that, what it does is they give money to those programs. And our city council people, I will tell you this, they make sure that everybody is, is as funded as they can be, they are tremendous people, they are tremendous citizens, and what they do takes a lot of work, and they get a lot of flak a lot of times, but they give us what we need. Like I said, I'm sure if, if we asked, if we asked the world and they had it, they'd give it to us, but this is a city, we run on a budget, and I think they do one hell of a job in making sure that we, everything is funded and kept running.
Just to pick a bat behind that, many of the council members, and I can speak for several, even myself, you know, like this coming Saturday at the nest, it's probably District Three, District, probably Tenth Annual Easter Ed Hunt, none of that come out the city budget, that actually come out of my pocket. Councilman William Carroll, he's a coach, and he go out there coached with different youths all the time. Councilman Cora Penn, involved all the time with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, last weekend, I was with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, taking a check, and that didn't come out the city pocket, that came out of my personal pocket at the Pan-Cap Breakfast. So, a lot of our council members, we give a lot. Gina Gregor, she always give a lot, especially to her park, when there's more parks and everything like that. But the thing about it is that we have, you know, each of us probably have like thirty thousand plus citizens in our, each, each of our district, out of the thirty thousand, I'd just say, two percent have great ideas and wanna be funded. We wanna have so much money, again, a lot of us, we deep in, we reach in our own pockets and we have to pay for different things, so, you know, different people have all the different, you know, ideas, which are great ideas, but we own the limit to, to so much. But as I had stated earlier, the Mobile City Council had never, never turned down anything that like the Director of Public Safety or our Chief Police ever brought to us for anything that go towards youth violence or anything towards the youth. I mean, even going from the school system to happen out with the, with the USA, you know, hospitals and everything, but the City of Mobile and the City Council, we are there, and we doing all that we can do, even going into our own personal pockets.
So, Chief Councilman, I've got a question for you. Kind of going along with the first question asked, and then along with the sentiment that I, I gathered from the panel of treating this like a public health issue and not trying to have it be a arrest issue. It seems to me, a lot of the responses that I heard, coming from the police department, where, which makes sense, is watching out for people that are leading to violence and whatnot, or nearing that edge, but going along with what the doctors were saying of trying to get even before that, so that they are less likely to end up in those situations. Would the city council be open to fund, as, on, on the city level, be funding more after school programs in Mobile schools, because that has statistically shown across the country to help break down gun violence as it gives students more sense of community, which desensitizes device of action like gun violence? I, I, I'm sorry, I, I ramble a little bit, but the, and I, I, I'm thankful that you've used your own personal money and the fact that other council members have used their own money to support the Boys and Girls programs and whatnot, but I, I make up that that's, that seems like that's not enough to help curtail the violence of that. Can the city do more in that avenue?
I mean, one, one thing I'll let me add is, we talk about the city, the city has a budget, and unfortunately, we have to live within that budget, and, you know, like I said, CJ is correct, and he says that they've never said no, but we also have to live within what the city has, because we can't spend more than the city takes in. I don't know if Mr. Gay would be able to expand on the fact that what after school programs are, and if there's any additional programs that are coming down the pipe or that are poorly funded. I don't know of anything in the near future that has been, that has been funded, we are, I do work for a very progressive superintendent and board who are, they're not going to let, you know, they're gonna find ways to fund the important things that, that, that we're doing to try to, as far as public safety and public health, and making sure that our, our students and staff are as safe as they possibly can be. One group that I didn't mention earlier is, we also have a group of social workers, there's our lead social worker, without question, in my opinion, is one of the, the persons in this county who cares as much about kids and families and their welfare as anyone else in, in, you know, in the state, probably. And they have lots of programs, they've actually, they now have a van with a car seat if they need to go and pick up if there's a family. Another thing, too, that we're working on in my department is, I've also hired another, a resource officer who is very well versed in domestic violence, that's one of the things that we're seeing is a very big issue with a lot of these families, a lot of these kids. But I have to remind my, again, remind my staff of is, look, when, when that kid gets out of the, he may be, you know, causing all kinds of issues at school, but probably first and foremost, we need to remember potentially what the, the environment they came from when they got out of the car that morning. So, we're trying to address those type of issues. And as far as programs, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not ready, and I'm not at, I, I don't know much about what's going on in after school care and things like that. We do have some, some, some programs through Boys and Girls Clubs and things like that, but actually, they use some of our campuses to try to get the kids involved in sports and things of that nature. But absolutely, you know, any other programs or ideas, our school board, again, is open to, to hearing any, anything that, any ideas that we can get, because again, we're doing what we can, eight hours we have of each day, and a lot of times, it's the after time that we need to do something, get them involved in, in something else or something productive.
You just snuck back in, I was gonna ask if you can hand the mic to Philon. Philon, the discussion was about, can you briefly go over all the after school programs that Parks, the City of Mobile Parks and Recs does?
Alright, good evening, everyone. So, pretty much what we do at RAC for, for the City of Mobile, NBRD, we have a group of teams, right here, raise your hand, they are our Youth Advisor Board, so they pretty much come with me, we meet every Monday, and we come up with all new fun and safe programs and activities and events for all teams and younger adults, whether it's recreational or educational. I mean, it's all over the place, I promise you, so, that's pretty much what we do.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Longa, and I'm the Education Director at Mobile Baykeeper, and I launched an after school program this spring called Next Gen Baykeepers. We're programmatic partners with Parks and Rec, we've been working with the Harmon Community Center, and we are very fortunate to have some of the officers who are in the back that have been coming out to our program, Officer Griffin has even kayaked with us on Dalver River. Unfortunately, this week, there was a shooting that took place on the front porch of Harmon Community Center, and the center was on lockdown for two hours. The children were traumatized from this event, they were not able to come to the program this week to participate, as usual. I have found out that shootings near the center happened, there was another day that they were on lockdown due to a perpetrator that they were after in the neighborhood. And there needs to be more security and safety at the center, at Harmon. These kids, we've built mentorship and a great relationship with them, they're fantastic children, and they deserve to go to a safe place, and the people who work there provide a safe of an environment as possible, they work hard every day to engage the kids in meaningful ways, and this happened directly on their front porch this week, and there needs to be a plan in place where our safe places can remain safe.
Two things. We're gonna extend our time just a little, and based on perception, this whole line was open when I asked for the mic, now it's filled. We're gonna stop at the last person, we're gonna stop at the last person. And the questions should be relative to our discussion or question. Mm-mm, not yet. The first thing we do is we make sure that we paint a big brush. My time in the Mobile County Public School System identified that in every school in Mobile, what happened on Harmon's porch happens in the school. And I know that's a reflection of a personal event, but we know this touches the whole of the city. Now, as we're coming, we're asking questions. Everyone that's a parent, raise your hand. Okay, good. We don't wanna leave the parents out. How many parents up here? Okay, so we're talking to each other, and this has been an impactful discussion to me, and no one's gotten off. These are direct questions for direct answers, and when we leave here, more work. I'm from Maysville, I'm telling you, come in. Yeah, I want you to come on down. Yeah, come on down.
First, I just wanna make sure, was, was the previous question addressed or concerned?
Yes, I addressed. I addressed, believe me, I addressed.
My name is Reggie Weaver, I'm from Orange, Mobile, moved back about three years ago after twenty-five years away, going off to college, living life, coming back. And I would just say, thank, thank you all as panelists. Of all the resources I've heard here, the one I'm most happy to hear about is the hospital-based health prevention or violence prevention services, in part because one of the places I lived was Chicago, Illinois, and it became familiar with a program called Cure Violence. And in the districts where that was actually implemented, it was very effective. And so, my question primarily for Dr. Williams, I think during the time, I've heard a lot of reference from many panelists about finding the root causes of violence, and I think even you spoke, you addressed the risk factors, but I'm wondering what you've learned about the actual root causes?
Thank you for that question. So, our hospital-based violence intervention program is a concerted effort in getting it off the ground. We got funding from the City of Mobile, as well as the Mobile County Health Department to be able to build this program. We got everyone hired on the team as of March, and we're now going through the trainings with the HAVI. Not sure if you're familiar with the HAVI, but it's the Health Alliance for Violence Intervention. It's a national entity that has helped to stand up these programs across the country, so they have nearly a hundred partners, programs that they've helped to stand up. We wanted to make sure that, just like Cure Violence, we're going after, or we're being trained under something that has worked, that we're not recreating the wheel, but we're doing things that we know is evidence-based, that, that has happened time and time again. And so, we have in our program, myself as the medical director, we have a project director, which is Josh Jones, formerly, he was the Youth Violence Prevention Coordinator in the city, Brandy Batiste, who's here tonight, is a part of our team, who will be providing counseling and overseeing our violence intervention specialists. We have three of those. These specialists are being trained as community health workers through a twelve-week program, as well as the training under the HAVI, so they're getting two separate trainings. The purpose for the community health worker training, in addition to the HAVI, is that we know it's not just about gun violence, right? When we meet patients at the bedside, when we meet their families at the bedside, there, we are going to, through our needs assessment and building those relationships, better understand what the risk factors or root causes are, and then the whole point is to put together a holistic package for that patient, for that family, not to just give them a sheet of paper and say, here's all the resources in the community, make the phone calls, you know, go and see, you know, this person or that person, but we actually become a part of the family, and we're able to, not only say, we've identified these three risk factors that don't only inhibit or prohibit your physical recovery, but that also are gonna put you at risk for re-victimization, or retaliation, or incarceration, you know? And so, it's about not only figuring out what those risk factors are, but addressing them, so putting together that plan, and we follow our patients for at minimum six months, so these services extend past the hospital. As we're building out this sort of ecosystem or safety net throughout multiple institutions, the health system is one, we play a pivotal role, because when patients come in, that is a time that we can intervene, that's a time that we can change the trajectory of what's happening. But at the basis, at the foundation of this house is community stakeholders. So, we don't, within the health system, you know, quite frankly, don't have the resources to be able to address all of the issues. Our community health workers, and to answer your question, our community health workers that we have currently already in a separate clinic through a program Dr. Michaels was talking about, we've identified several risk factors for our patients, or, or needs, priority needs of our patients. One is transportation, being able to One is transportation, being able to get to and from these services is an issue. Another is food insecurity and housing. Those are three of the big ones. Of course, insurance and, and money for vital services, for medications. Those are five of the big things that we're seeing in our clinic population. For the age fifth, we are set to go live in June. So we're still in the building phases. But, but what I wanted to address is that foundation of community stakeholders. So it is imperative that we are all, and I was just talking about this just a moment ago as I was walking in, but it's going to take each and every community-based organization, community members who specialize in certain things. So if it's lifelines counseling, you know, for mental health, if it's our pastors, you know, creating a model to where we have church home bases. Yes, we want patients to be able to come back to their healthcare appointment, but we also need a place in the community that we can go when we don't have transportation, that we can walk to. So we're in Maysville, what if Revelation is one of those home bases? That we, that we have this, the spiritual, spiritual care, but also they be hubs, our home bases is what we've been calling it in our, in our building out of this program. So a lot has been learned and certainly we have a long way to go, we haven't even gone live yet. But in general, there are, those social determinants of health that we're talking about, it's five, you know, different categories that span everything from economic stability and employment to environment. We talked a lot about culture, we talked a lot about the schools, all of these things are so interconnected. The normalization of violence, access to firearms, a lot of these, you know, terms have been politicized and divisive, but I think we can all agree that we don't think gun violence should be the leading cause of death. I see you moving towards me, I'm gonna give you the mic back, but I hope I at least started to answer your question. And as we learn more, we're transparent and happy to share.
Now we're gonna do something a little bit different. I'm going to pass my summary and I'm gonna do something a little bit different. Commander Gregor, we're taking. We're gonna give each person as in the line an opportunity to voice their concern. And we're gonna respond to each one of them. And that response may come from one of our panelists because this is something that's in motion. If only in tonight, we'll do this again, maybe in another community. But we're gonna ask you to voice your concern. I'm gonna come to the end of the line, which means no one else will be able to get in the line as we've got in the line. Okay, that's the end of the line. Now allow them to go ahead and voice their concern, boys and girls. Please come.
Okay. Good evening. First of all, I'm Samantha Ingram, I'm a retired superintendent, also an education consultant and a concerned citizen. First of all, I just want to thank the panel for being here, starting this courageous conversation. And Councilman Smalls, thank you again for all of your support, but more importantly, on Saturday, we're going to be focused on gun violence for community extravaganza. But I want to follow up on the question in the risk factors that you discussed. My question is, I hear the resources, I hear the programs, but can you share with me the comprehensive approach to addressing the risk factors using multiple agencies across the city? And when I ask that, I'm asking, is that something in the plan? Is there something already in works for that? If you could just give more information on the comprehensive approach to address the systemic issue as it relates to our conversation tonight?
Absolutely. So that's exactly what I was saying is when we're building out this comprehensive plan, at the foundation is community stakeholders. And that's community-based organizations, that's community leaders, that's different partners, whether it be education, justice system, that's all of us, that's the collective. As I mentioned, we are, we are in the building phases, but there have been conversations with the Community Resource Network, with Make an Action, with a host of lifelines counseling, a host of different community-based organizations that we'll have to lean on. As I mentioned, the health system doesn't have the capacity to provide all of the services that our patients will need. We definitely understand that. And so when we talk about this holistic perspective, it is the psychosocial and that, that mental health, excuse me, psychoemotional and mental health services. It is the, the socioeconomic and housing, all of the social determinants of health. So, sorry, I don't know.
I was listening to your conversation.
Okay. But yes, it, it takes multiple agencies. And so as we build out this program, we have funding in order to provide our partners who are doing the work. So it's not just all funding coming to USA Health. We have funding for our community partners as well as unrestricted funds for our patients. So if our patients need wound care supplies or if they need a co-pay for mental health services, or if they've been in the hospital and their lights are no longer on, we have funds to help patients with those needs. I hope that addresses your question.